All right, it is seven o'clock. It looks like we have all the board members that I expected that said they could attend and we see the applicant and some other people who have joined. So we'll probably go ahead and get started. Steven, if you want to go ahead and read that public notice?
Sure. A town of Oxford zoning board of appeals, public hearing notice. Please take notice that the Oxford zoning board of appeals will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom meeting application on Thursday, March 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM to consider variance application of Raymond G. Bonneville for property owned by Christopher D. and Molly K. Bonneville located at 17 Old Depot Road, Oxford, Mass. Assessors map 12A parcel CO3 in the R3 residential zoning district. The applicant requests a variance of the minimum lot size requirement as set forth in chapter 10, table four, uh, table six of the Oxford zoning bylaws for the construction of a two-family dwelling. The application may be viewed upon request to the town clerk or land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should join the Zoom meeting on the date and time designated or submit written comments before the mass publications.org for legal notice.
Thank you, Steven. So we have another notice. This is pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And tonight's meeting agenda, we have the public hearing, 17 Old Depot Road, application for a variance. It is the policy of the town of Oxford to provide access to all citizens. Any physically challenged person wishing to attend a meeting of any town board committee or commission should notify the town by calling 508-987-6030. Agenda items are subject to change. For updated information, please call the land management department at 508-987-6045 up to 4:30 PM the day of the meeting. Okay, Steven, back to you for the variance requirements.
Already board of appeals, town of Oxford. Appeals to the zoning board of appeals must be filed within 20 days from the date or order of decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. Variances. In order or grant a variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the zoning board of appeals must find that all of the following conditions have been met. A. There are unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures. B. Especially affect such land or structures, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located. C. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, but not of personal nature to the petitioner or appellant. And D. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purpose of this bylaw. In accordance with chapter 48, section 15 of the mass general laws, you are hereby advised that any person aggrieved by the decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for in section 17 of said chapter 48 within 20 days after the date of filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
All right. Thanks again, Steven. All right, so we received a packet of information. I will go through and scroll through and show everybody the documentation that we've received to date. And I'll talk to the applicants and let them, you know, state their case, let us know if there's any additional information. Let us know what they're trying to do. Board members will ask questions. After that, we'll open it up and see if anybody else that's on the call from the public wants to be heard. And before I start the packet, I just want to let the applicant know. We had, we're normally a five voting member board. And we have, at this point, we have one alternate. We had two people recuse themselves for a conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest. So we are down to four members. We have four voting members. And for variances, you do need to have four votes in the affirmative. The only option I can offer you is at some point, if you feel you'd like to withdraw your case until some point in the future. You obviously could do that at any time. And we have been actively trying to seek additional board members. We've not been successful in doing that. So I don't know how long it would be before we would have another member that could then come on and vote. But what we have tonight, and we did get opinion from town council that that four members is enough for the quorum of the meeting. So we're going to proceed until you tell us, you know, you want to go forward or not. But we'll start off. Do you understand that or have any questions on that or?
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I could for a moment.
Yes.
I had to walk away at the very beginning of the meeting. Did you roll call attendance?
I'm sorry, I did not. So for members of the board, Steven Balconis, you're present?
Yes.
Okay, Dan Champagne?
Yes.
Tom Purcell?
Present.
And myself also, Pete LaFlash. Okay, so this is, is this large enough for people to see? Do you want me to?
I can see everybody this side.
Okay, so this is the front page of the application that we received from Mr. Bonneville. It butters may have received this already also, but it shows the variance, looking for variance, the minimum size lot requirement of 30,000 square foot for a two-family dwelling in an R3 residential zone. We have the legal notices that Steven had read. We have, this is certification from the town tax collector that taxes are current on the property. This is a copy of the deed when the property was purchased. I believe it was 2018 I saw.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We have, this is a section of the assessor's zoning map. And the property is circled. It's this trapezoidal shaped property. This is, who was this from? Was this from a?
Surveyor.
Surveyor? Okay, this is certified plot plan here, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. We have, this is the letter that was received back from the zoning enforcement officer stating that the required minimum lot size, 20,000 square foot in R3 is increased by 50% to 30,000 for a two-family dwelling. And it's saying that the current lot size listed here at 26,889 square feet, you know, is short of the 30,000.
Oh, now that, if you go back, excuse me, Chad, if you go back, it's 27,615.
Okay, I see that here.
Yeah, we changed that on the documentation that was brought in. And we were, we were notified that there was two plans. One plan read the 26th and the other plan read 27. And 27,615. So we never had the chance to really update the documentation that you have. But this is the updated plan.
Okay.
So in our reality, we're, we're, we're short 2,000 and some change.
Okay. We have, this was the original letter. This was dated September 28th of 2020. Again, it has the 26,000 square feet. It, it is saying that the tax bill lists the size of the lot at .73 acres or 31,799. And then there's another letter, I believe, from February, whoops, February 12th, stating the same, but changing the total square footage, saying that it came in at 27,615. We have a certified list of the butters. I know it's sideways here, but I do see at least a couple of the folks are on the call today. And that's what we have for paperwork. So I'll turn it over to the applicant at this point. Again, if you'd like to tell us more about what you're trying to do or explain everything, then we'll have the board ask some questions.
Yeah, so basically, we purchased the property for, for me, it's my property. I planned to put a duplex on it from the start. When we purchased it, it said the 7.3 acres, expected 31,800 square feet. Been paying the tax on that since we purchased it. And then further found out that it is just shy of the square footage needed. So we're just looking to try to get the variance so that I'd be able to live there. My sister is also interested in one of the units that would be going up, looking to do new units, something nice, add to the neighborhood. And that's why we're here today.
Okay. Why don't I turn it over? I see Dan, your picture's at the highest. So if you'd like to go first and ask some questions.
All right. Well, thank you. Nice to meet you. So on this, on this lot, just want to confirm. When you purchased it, you believed it was 31,799 square feet?
Correct.
Or that's the taxes what you're paying on?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's the taxes.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt. We went to the town, looked at what the requirements were, looked at what the taxes were being filed as and then purchased it based upon that.
Okay. And so what you're saying, the property size is 27,615?
That's correct. I would like to add something, if I could, through the chair and the honorable members.
Yes.
We can't close the loop. The engineer, if you look at, the first engineering plan that was 26 was, was an estimated calculation. The 27 was that he got, which he did a field survey. And I had to confirm that how much is actually really there? And if, when he went there, we did some field measuring and stuff. And he also, the second engineer, said that he couldn't close the loop.
When you say close the loop, sir, what do you mean? He couldn't come up with a definitive answer?
They can't get all four corners. They got, they got, if you're looking at the lot from the street, they got the first, and there is a stake there. On the left hands, on the right hand side, if you're looking at the lot, there's another one on the left hand side of the lot. And Christopher found the one that was over here on the left side back. But the one that's on the school side, on the right hand side, they can't close. So he was going to come tonight, but his wife is, his wife is ill, so he couldn't, he can't be here. But he told me that, you know, Ray, there's, there can be more there. Even if we gather the information that the stone wall, which borders it, any stone wall that boards any property now, they can go by the face of the wall instead of the inside portion of the wall. Okay, he didn't do that. He didn't do that. He took, he took the, he took the inside from the telephone pole in. And that's, that's where his expertise is in. He doesn't want to go outside and, and, and take that measurement, not yet anyway. But as, as, as of right now, he's stating, and he said, let the board members know that it really is a plus, not a minus.
What does that mean? It's a plus? It would be adding to the 27,000?
Yeah. Yeah, and you know how it says plus or minus on it?
Um, the plan I'm looking at, I don't see that, but.
Where it says.
I only have one copy of the plan, the one with 27. So if you're referencing that there was an earlier plan that was 26, I don't see that.
Can you scroll back to that plan for me, please?
Sure. So this is what I was.
Um, okay.
But, but I, but I understand your point, so.
All right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Dan?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll continue. And thank you for the additional information. So question, I did not get to drive by the property, which I tend to like to do. I did look at Google Maps, trying to understand where the property is. Are there any structures currently on that lot?
My son, my, my son and I demoed the house. So the house is now gone.
Okay, so the picture we're seeing now on the screen, that's no longer there?
Correct.
Okay. And this is going to be, I see town water and town sewer it'd be connected to?
Yes.
And the previous home was connected to there?
Now, the, the previous owner had a sanitation, sewage in the back of the house.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I think I've asked the questions I've had. I may have some more. I hope I can ask again if anything pops up.
Sure. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Tom Purcell?
Here. I have several questions. One is, I'm looking at the plan. You can hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yep. Okay, I'm looking at the plan that's been presented. First of all, the plan has been presented by a PE and not a registered land surveyor. So as far as certifying the size of the lot, the PE can't do that. Only an RLS can do that. And if for some reason Mr. Williamson is an RLS, he's supposed to have stamped it and signed it as an RLS. So in essence, we don't really know the size of the lot at this point. We've got three different conjectures on what the size of the lot is between the town's estimated drawing, what Mr. Bonneville believes was correct, and then according to Mr. Williamson, his calculations. But again, it's got to be a certified block plan that comes before the ZBA. This is not a certified block plan. So that, my question number one is, is a deficiency there? Number two, there was a dwelling on it, and we've already answered that question. And I know it's been demoed and the lot's clear. Number three, I have, I'm 99% certain that there's town water that runs in front of the property. But I do not believe that there's town sewer there. The town sewer is down on Depot Road, not Old Depot Road. So you would either have to make application for a long distance hookup or apply and put in and provide the engineering for a new septic system for the site. Which is not impossible. It's just that there's some holes in your application that need to be further addressed. When you say that there's infrastructure to the, to this property, you should usually present some evidence that you're going to be able to tie into town sewer and town water. That's by just a quick letter from the, from the, from the DPW that says that it's available and it can be hooked up. That's number three. And I'm not worried too, too much about the consistency of the structure with the neighborhood. It, with a two-family house, it really shouldn't be much of a problem. The, I did want to have one other, one other concern. And you'll have to give me a minute because I've, I just lost my train of thought on it.
Okay, that's okay, Tom. We can come back to you if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could, please.
Okay, Steven?
Yes. You know, agreeing with Tom on the plot plan. I mean, I don't see no sizes on the garage, no sizes on the house. And to protect all people involved, I think it would pay to have the engineer come down and do this precisely so now we know exactly where that house is going to be built, along with the garage and the dimensions of the house and the dimensions of the garage. There's hardly any traffic up and down there because they made that a one-way street. And there was a dwelling on there before. But right now it looks like you have to cross the Ts and dot the Is. And, you know, before we get into a vote, it'd be something for you to think about that you just got to put together some of the loose ends that actually going to protect you and everybody else. But what we have in front of us is an estimated lot size. And like what Tom said, we need something that is certified all the way around. Above and beyond that, if that was presented, it'd probably wrap this up tonight, but those are just my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Thank you for your, for your input there. The, the garage and the, and the house does meet the required setbacks. And I, I, I see what you're saying about the sizes that that, that, that section is missing. And I'd be more than happy to have the engineer go over this and.
Yeah, also to speak on that, we went from one engineer to another. We were working with one and then we found an engineer that kind of fit us better. And it seems like some of the information was lost in between going from one to the other. Also, I just wanted to address Thomas Purcell's, I believe it was his third concern. We did go to the DPW to make sure that we have the right grade.
Peter, I think his name is?
Yeah, and, and we, I agree, we should have brought some confirmation from them, paper, paperwork, which we definitely can get. And that's something that we can do for you, definitely.
Okay. Tom, do you want me to go back to you or would you like me to ask some questions?
Yeah, I got, I've got the two, I got actually two questions to be sorted out.
Go ahead.
Number one is the, the survey plot plan. That's where your surveyor would come in. And he can explain why a lot, it's what's called closing all the meets and bounds. What, what he's telling you is that doing all the calculations for meets and bounds and distances and and all of that, the four corners do not meet. So there may have to be some research to find out an error, find out where the error is, or there is some other way that a surveyor can, it's called to remedy the situation.
Yes.
And close the lot. It may take a little bit of time. The reason I, we bring this up is because it's been the, the practice of the ZBA to grant relief from whatever the setback is, whatever the square footage is. And if you don't have an accurate number for the actual size of the lot or the relief that you're looking for, technically, we can't grant it.
Now, can I add something, Tom?
Well, let me, let me finish my thoughts first.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's number one. So we need a more exact lot size. Number two is, my question is to the chairman of the board. Peter, if for some reason he gets a denial and cannot, and can't get approved tonight, is there some restriction that he cannot come back for a year or two years or?
Mary can confirm this, but I believe if you're denied, there's a two-year window, you'd have to wait to come back?
Correct. Yes.
Exactly. And that's my, that's my concern. If you don't think we're going to get it done, Ray, you might want to, and you're not going to get your approval if for some reason, you might want to either continue or withdraw.
Yeah, I think under that discretion, we'd like to withdraw based on the information that we have. And hopefully, maybe we can get our ducks in a row and possibly, if we could have more than four board members as well, maybe those are two things we could put together.
Well, before we do that, there is a way, Tom, of closing this out through an engineering company that is very, very reputable and very, very expensive, which is George Smith. He can do this. He can close this out. But he has to start all the way down from where he is, then go to the school and do the whole school down that road. You know, that is going to cost about $12,000. He told me he could do this, but he said, Ray, it's going to be very, very expensive. The, the point he was making was that this, this lot was cut out, out of the school, right? We can't go to the school and ask them to give us some more, you know, just, you know, just 2,000 square feet. I'm, I'm going to ask that that part be in my hardship because, you know, with the, with the, with the cost of building this and everything, we, you know, we, we can make it. The reason why I purchased this was to put two children in one spot. My son in one and my daughter in another. This is not in an investment. I also own other property in Oxford. And I love, I, you know, I, I would love for them to have that be their primary residence. But I asked the board to overlook that particular issue.
So, so sir, you're saying that you, you feel part of your hardship is because if this was another situation, you might be able to approach the butter and buy some land to remedy the situation. But you're saying you can't do that because it's the school?
It's the school. The school's not going to allow any man.
So we can, yeah, we can certainly note that as, you know, something you've stated. I, I, I think I'm hearing from the board members though, and I do agree, we need to have an accurate number in order to grant relief. So if you're asking us to waive that, I, I don't know that, I mean, we can ask the other board members if they, how they feel about that, but I'm, it's sounding to me like they, that that's a normal requirement that we have, and they might want to stay with that. Let me just explain that, you know, the options I think that Tom had put out is, you know, we've, there have been some things that have been asked here, like to confirm the, the septic with a letter from the DPW. You know, obviously, Tom talked about the accurate lot size dimensions. These things, you know, we could continue the hearing and, and give you time to obtain those things. As far as withdrawing, if you withdraw, then you would have to resubmit and start over from the beginning as opposed to a continuation where we could come back in a few weeks or a month or whatever you felt you needed.
Uh, yeah, I think we'd prefer the continuation then.
Yeah, and I don't know that I'm going to be able to deliver on getting a fifth board member. As I, I'm not sure I stated it clearly from the beginning, but we currently have five full-time members and one associate member. Two of those six people have recused themselves, so I don't think they're going to participate until we get a new member to join the board as an alternate. They, and they would be a voting, you know, when we need someone to fill in to get to the Need someone to fill in to get to the fifth person, we would take that associate member and they would become a fifth voting member. So. You know, unless somebody steps forward to to fill that position in the near future, there's no way I could guarantee when that would happen.
Yeah, and that's that's not a problem. I thought I'd just throw it out there, but based on that information, I think we'd be fine doing the continuation with four.
Okay. Tom, are you all set with your questions for now? Or did you have any more?
No, I'm I'm all set with my questions and and my my concern is actually for the applicant. I just don't want him to. Step into something and then get a denial and then have be out of business for two years. So at this time, if there's a little bit of paperwork to clean up, if there's a little extra cost involved. When he bought the lot, he's, you know, if it was a simple matter of tearing the house down and replacing it, that's one thing. But what you're actually doing is you're taking the house down, which you've done. And you're asking to change the use of the facility. And that now is is where. It it created a little bit of a bugaboo there. That now you're looking to change the use of the property. And I realize I didn't want you. I didn't want you to step on a landmine and find out that. With a denial, you're going to be out of business for two years. I don't want you to do that.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you. It is zoned for it, though. It is zoned for it. We just don't have the proper square footage. It is zoned. That property is zoned for a. Side by side or a duplex. But again. The the square footage is where we kind of lack. And it does have, we intend on having it be town water, town sewer. And we do meet the setbacks. I think I think this plan does need to be revised a little bit. In in size of the garage and the house.
Okay. Well, somebody going to say something?
Well, I also just want to say thank you for Thomas's suggestion and expertise. I have a lot of gratitude for that.
Okay. I had some similar questions that have already been answered. I had not driven by, but I I do look at the assessor's drawing here, and it shows an outline of a building. I did look online and I I saw the building, so that was a question I had. And on the dimensions and where the the new building was going to be situated relative to what the building was on the plan. But now that I I hear that that's been taken down, I think what I'm hearing Tom saying is that. If you had rebuilt, and I know this was not your intent, but if you had rebuilt. As an example, on the same footprint of the building that was there, then there would not be. You know, any question, I think, maybe if you tried to convert it to a two family, but it was built on the same. Footprint, I think there would be more of you would not be making it. More nonconforming, I guess. So.
Yeah, there'd be no question in the dimensions or.
Let's see what else. I know on the assessor's map, it also shows one of the lines at 131.5 feet. Versus the 181.5. Which I thought was funny because then that would have made their calculation, I would think, to be even less square footage. As opposed to more, you know, this. I thought maybe it was a typo at first, but. I think it's clear that's 131 that it shows for the dimension on the. And this line is clearly larger than the 150. So. Anyways. I I echo the thing also that was stated about we should have the building dimensions on the plan. And something, even if you happen to have a, you know, a front view or something, you know, just 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 a sketch to show us maybe what the height of the building is proposed to be. You know, is it a two? Is it a two story? Is it a? You know, what's the height of the garage going to be? Is it going to be equal to the to the height of the house?
Well, we would we would we would know that once we got the requirement. Height from the building department.
I'm sure the allowed height is probably. Yeah, and your garage is is detached?
Yes.
Okay. What what's going to go between the garage and the house?
Nothing. The driveway.
That's the driveway? Okay. And the garage, is that going to have any living space in it or?
It's it's going to have a room above it for storage.
Okay. There'll be no plumbing. Is there going to be plumbing in that building or?
That's undecided as of right now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I think that's what I had for questions. I I'll echo or maybe read back what I think I heard. Well, I'm sorry. Let me open it up to the board members one more time. Any other questions?
The chairman.
Yes.
I think the the best thing here would probably continue this. And let the applicants do some history on that property. Go back as far as as far as they can. And maybe something else might come up to resolve. The dimensions of that land. Then work on the dimensions of the both dwellings. And I think that might resolve a lot of issues.
Yeah, the three items that I had. Heard is we'd like to see a letter from the DPW that confirms that there's town septic there. I'm sorry, town sewer there. The concerns about the accurate lot size or a plan that's stamped by a a land surveyor. And the building dimensions on the plan. At this point, I'd like to open it up. I know there's some folks from the public if they had any questions or anything they wanted to add to this matter. I would ask if you if you do want to speak up, just let us know your name. What do you need, Mary? Their name and address?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to? Speak? Okay, either they're still on mute or they don't want to speak, so.
I'm here. My name is Chris O'Malley. I live at 16 Old Depot Road in Oxford.
Okay.
Reason I'm here is I live directly across the street from the property. And every house in this neighborhood practically in this area are all single family homes. And I won't get into a long history of it, but that house was left in a. The house that was torn down was left in for a year in a state of disrepair where the fire department trained on it from Oxford, Auburn and Worcester. And the property was left wide open. The property was left. In any in any way, kids, we were calling yelling for kids to get out of the property. It was left this way for a year. So we don't have a lot of high hopes for what's going to be going up there just because of last year, what we suffered through living directly across the street. And seeing it every single day with our own eyes, praying that they were going to tear the house down. It sat that way for a very long time. And we don't have much faith in the builders across the street who are putting this house up or planning this. We think that a two family is going to be an eyesore to the neighborhood. This neighborhood is a single family home neighborhood. We have very little traffic on the street. It is not a one way street. It is a two way street. You just can't enter from. The Route 12 side on the north end of Old Depot, but it is a two way street. You can't enter and exit go both ways up and down it. But we don't want the extra traffic. And we just don't think it's going to fit to enable it personally. And that's our thoughts, myself and my wife Regina. So apologize, I said Ashton on the screen before. This is from my son's Zoom from school this morning.
Okay, no problem. All right. Thank you for your input, Chris. Is there anybody else that would like to talk?
Yeah, my name is David Peterson. This is my wife Michelle. We're at 14 Old Depot, so. Kind of across the way as well. Just to kind of mirror what Chris had said, yeah, the house was kind of in a very bad state when we moved in. We bought the house because it is our house because it's a one family neighborhood. So the two family does concern us more for a property tax value or property value. They do tend to hurt property value. That being said as well, we had to stare at an open pit across the street for six, seven months. So yeah, it is a concern. I think. At the end of the day, too, talking about the street, we didn't, we weren't aware of the the hookup to public sewer. We took down trees and had to get a police detail because we cut it down to one road, well, one way. Like Chris said, it is a two way street. So if we're tearing up the street and you can't enter from Route 12, that's a hardship of getting to our house. And it's more than a day's worth of work to put in sewer, from my understanding, correct? I mean. That that's a big concern.
What were you saying? You cut down trees? Was that to put in your septic or what was?
No, no, we just had trees cut down off the front of our lot.
So we actually did work with the town on that because we do know that the road was so narrow. So we did have the DPW come out and from the advice of the town clerk. And the police were here as well. So we did hire a police detail so we could cut down the trees for the day. And we did pay a significant amount of money just to make sure that the street was either passable. There was a police officer down by the one way, do not enter sign, excuse me, right off of Route 12. And we paid for that police officer to sit there all day long to allow traffic in the street.
So would that like our concern, would that be a multiple day situation?
I don't have knowledge of that. I don't know. Tom, would you know or? How long would it take to tie in septic, tear up the road, if there's even septic there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sewer, sewer, sewer.
My my understanding, if there is no sewer there, they would have to. I think the sewer is down on Depot Road. I'm not exactly sure where. But I think it serves the school. And. It'd have to be what's called a long distance hookup, which is only a it's a two inch main, but still. It would be a forced main that would have to be possibly a forced main. That would run along the side of the road. All the way down and make the connection into the into the gravity sewer down in front of the school somewhere.
Well, it sounds like we're going to continue this and and ask for this information, one of them. One of those pieces being for confirmation that there is. Town sewer there. So that might help answer some of these questions where that we're speculating on right now. Maybe when we know the distance it has to go and where it's located. That would. Give an idea of what type of. How much of the road they'd be proposing to, you know, or have to have to break up.
So my my only question about that, too, and I'm sorry to harp on that, is. If you go to that sewer at the end of Old Depot, like you go to the end of our road right now, closer to the school where it's a corner. There's giant potholes right around where that gravity is because it overflows constantly. Like if there's a big rainstorm, we get water at the end of the street, like you're fording water to get off our street. So if we're adding, you know, no offense to Ray, trying to put the house in, I understand, but if we're. You know, adding sewer into something that's already overflowing. That's also a concern. Like I said, my our main purpose here is our concern about property value, yes. Ray did say that it's his son and his daughter moving in. We were worried about renters, but if that's the case, I understand it's a family. But now it comes down to, again, closing down a street that. Yes, isn't the highest traffic street in Oxford, but it's difficult to navigate. So that that's a kind of a big concern for us. To be honest, too, my my wife is pregnant, so God forbid it's a street's closed down today and I got to get her to the hospital. You know, that's a that's a big one for us. Sorry to harp on that, too, but.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's not like this one over here. You'll be doing great.
All right, go ahead, Tom.
Just for the for the Peterson's behalf. The the water that's overflowing, it's in the street and all of that is not really sewerage, but that's called storm water.
Okay.
Not necessarily the sewerage or sewer coming from the toilets and all the sanitary waste. That goes into a whole separate water system.
Gotcha.
Which is a nice tight system. Doesn't bad ordinarily, it doesn't back up. And and run all over the place, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I would like to add that. That manhole that you were talking about. If it's right on Millbury Road, right? At that intersection?
Yeah, where the stop signs are.
Yeah, right here, right? Well, from there. To the beginning of the lot. Is 133 feet. And what we could do. Okay, is stick to the right hand side of the road, going all the way up until we reach. The 150. Point two line. And then go 10 feet past that. That's where the man that's where the that's where the manhole would go. And then 10 feet back. We put the we put the lateral going right into the property. It would be fast and quick. So I'm going to say it would be three days tops. Putting a police officer at the end of that road and two at the beginning. So. I do have my drain layers. And I do have my own equipment to do this. And as as. As the in the town engineer is aware of. Our idea. He said that he would he would go and consider it with a plan. And let him know. The best route to do this. And also to put in. That manhole. That can continue to go straight up that road. But we don't have any plans for that. Alls I want to do is just get to the beginning of my property. And then put the lateral in. And then from there, we'll wait till the house is built, the foundation is in. Then we'll hook up to the town water and town sewer. It already has. The lateral in for the water and the water is hooked up to a shut off. So that part, I'm glad that is already taken care of.
One thing I'd like to add, just to. Help with one of the concerns. I'm a licensed real estate agent and the duplex being a higher value than the other houses on the street, just based on square footage, rooms. Actually, and being newer, will actually raise the value of the rest of the houses on the street. So I just wanted to.
It's not fit the neighborhood.
Say again?
It's not going to fit the neighborhood.
You got two of them down at the end of the road.
Quarter mile that quarter mile that way. There isn't a double duplex in this neighborhood. This neighborhood is not a duplex. It's a single family.
By neighborhood, you mean street because on that street, I agree with you in that neighborhood, there's many.
There's a lot of there's a lot of side by sides in that neighborhood.
Quarter mile that way and a quarter mile that way. There's nothing within a quarter mile of this.
There's one on the main road that's about.
Quarter mile north of us, yes. Then we're headed to 395 a quarter mile.
The the reference Mr. Barnwell just made to the town engineer. That he had that he had talked with the town engineer. Is that some other information maybe you could get for us? About what your plan is on on if there is the sewer there and and how you would connect? I think that would be helpful for people to know what the impact may be. I know you did say the road may be closed for three days, but but to know exactly where it is and what's being done, I think, might help. On a decision.
Sure, no problem. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so. Unless anybody has anything else to offer, I think we're going to look for a motion from one of the board members to continue this. So I would ask the applicants, how long do you think you need and, you know, what does your schedule look like? We're looking at a few weeks to a month here before we try and schedule another meeting or?
I'm I'm going to say two months.
Yeah, six to eight weeks.
The engineering, the engineering department of this is what is. Going to take up the majority of the time. Would you agree, Thomas?
I agree. I think that, you know, for you to look at eight weeks, six to eight weeks is a minimum. So that he can resolve all of these issues. But I I would think whatever eight weeks is now.
Probably right around Memorial Day, I would think. So maybe. Whatever the Thursday after Memorial Day is or?
Yeah, that's my thoughts exactly.
I might as well. I'm going to be a year older on that day.
Nice. So Mary, how does that sound for scheduling?
It's doable, but the action date is, I believe, May 18 that the board needs to act by. So you'd have to have the applicant sign a request for an extension. So you'd have to have the applicant sign a request for an extension.
Okay, so maybe we're going to, uh, obviously we can't do that right now in person as we normally would if we were at the.
No, but you could vote to do it and I could.
With a contingency that it's contingent upon that? Okay.
Yep.
All right. So what we're proposing is to move this. What is the date on that? Was that, did you say the 28th? Or did I?
Uh, May 27.
May 27th. So we're going to look for a motion to.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Uh, you said the Thursday after Memorial Day. Um, it doesn't look like Memorial Day is going to be observed until May 31st.
Oh, okay.
This year.
My mistake. Um, well, again, it's up to the applicant. Do you want to go eight weeks or nine weeks?
Eight is, eight is uh, convenient.
Okay, so.
May 27.
May 27th. Okay, so we're going to look for a motion to continue it to May 27th, but because the action date, that's the date by which we have to act. If we don't act, you get your, your um, request by our inactivity. So we would ask you to submit a letter to, to who does that go to, Mary?
Uh, they can send it to um, to me.
Okay, so send it to Mary in the, in the land department stating that you, what is it, that they are giving a certain, certain amount of extension to that or how is it?
A request for extension of time for the board to act. And I would request that they probably put that action date out to say June 30th.
Okay.
If, if things aren't resolved by March 27th, you could continue the public hearing again before the action date is up.
Yeah, that's the other thing I was going to suggest. If we do get close to that date, you don't feel you have all your information gathered yet, you could request a, um, that we continue it again. So what I'm looking for from the board is a motion to continue to May 27th with a contingency that the applicant does provide an extension of the time we have to um, to decide on this by uh, what did you say again? I'm sorry, June?
June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th.
Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in with one thing?
Absolutely, Dan. Yep.
Uh, thanks, Peter. Um, they were talking eight weeks, which would actually be May 20th. Uh, May 27th will be nine weeks. I don't know, I don't think it matters. I just want to make sure we have clarity there.
Okay.
That's fine.
Still all set with May 27th? Okay, thanks, Dan. So. All right, so I need a board member to present a motion.
I recommend that uh, um, that a continuance be granted uh, as presented, uh, with a re- written request from the applicant uh, to grant an extension to June 30th, 2021.
Okay, yes. Someone going to second that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, and then we need a vote from the four members? Yes.
Individual elections?
Yep, Steven?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes, Tom.
And yes, for me, continue to May 27th. Um, Mary, will you send out the Zoom again to everybody that's on this when we get close to that? And um, I think that's it then. So um, see, see folks again on May 27th.
Well, to the chair and honorable members, I would like to thank you guys for taking time out of your, your day to uh, you know, to help us out. Really, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, for board members, we do have other business, uh, some minutes to go over.
One quick question. Is this meeting going to be continued on the May 27th at 7:00 PM as well?
Yes, it will.
7:00 PM.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, so we do have some minutes from October 29th being the last time we met, I believe. Was it that long ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow. So, so we had um, myself, Stephen Dal Kunis, uh, Tom Purcell, Daniel Champagne. So the four of us were pl- present at that meeting. Has anybody had a chance to view these? Are you okay with approving them tonight or do you need more time to review or do you want to make any changes?
Tom Purcell, I already read them and I'm recommending approval.
Okay. Do we have a second or any other discussion on it?
I read them as well. They sound to capture the meeting accurately, so I would um, second that.
Okay.
And uh, I agree also.
Okay, so let's have a vote then formally. Uh, Steven?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so. Okay, so those are approved. Um, we didn't have any other formal business on the, on the agenda? Is there anything that anyone else would like to bring up?
So the agenda has listed that uh, Tony Souza, our new director of planning and economic development would be with us, but he, uh, due to uh, a family matter, he was, he's not able to be here tonight.
Okay. Is it possible Town Hall may be open by May 27th?
Anything's possible. I, uh, I don't know.
Did you, uh, I'm just curious, did, I didn't see Al's name pop up at all. Did you see him join at all?
I did not see Al. I did not see him.
Okay. All right, um. Okay, well, if no one has anything else, I guess we'll, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Like the motion?
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and a, a vote? Do you need an individual vote, Mary? Yeah?
Yes, please.
Okay, Steven?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Mary. Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
All right, have a good night.